Okay, we're gonna open up tonight's meeting. Tonight is the regularly scheduled meeting for May 2017, May 10th, 2017. Let the record be flat that we're a short one member tonight, so Kim Wilson has been activated. And this is Kim's last meeting. I thank her for coming out tonight to help us through this. She's aware of all the different reviews that we're involved with, and she's had pretty good attendance. TJ Wade is here, Gail Osborne and myself, Chairman Dave Linehan. Thanks everybody for coming tonight. We've got a couple of public hearings, so we've got a few minutes to kill. Why don't we review the presentation of minutes from the last meeting, April 12th? Everybody okay with the minutes? First thing, I'd like to apologize. I think I spelled O'Reilly's, misspelled them a number of times, and no one ever corrected me when I tried to get things corrected. I always thought it was I before E., but not in the case of O'Reilly. We all set with the minutes?
We're all set with the minutes.
Okay.
I wish you'd took them.
You wanna move, Gail? Gail moves?
Second.
TJ seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, that's done. What else can we do? Till 7:05. Why don't we take the Lucci project at the end?
Yeah.
I think we're all set, right?
Yeah.
Pretty close. Can you set it up over here? Yeah, set it up over here, and they might be able to catch it on camera. Alright. So basically, this is a little bit of a review. We reviewed the project on a couple of prior meetings, and had some comments on the prior review. And ultimately, in the last month, we spent some time reviewing with Gary Robinson some of his comments, and ensuring we've addressed his questions and concerns. And we've updated the plans based on the prior two review meetings from the board's comments as well. And that was predominantly related to some fencing, some landscaping. We've reviewed all of the site features in the past. We've discussed things with the water and sewer department, so I think we've addressed all of the prior questions in this most recent revised set of plans. And we also, you also got the comments back from the county. The county also did provide that letter recommending, I believe, of no impact or an approval. And their concern was addressed in the initial application, because we did have an opportunity to discuss this project with them at the zoning board level. So we included that in the original design, so that was primarily the sidewalk replacement. So we feel that all the questions and comments have been addressed to this point, and certainly if you have additional questions, we'd be happy to discuss any of those. And I believe we did seek her at the last meeting, and so really, we're here tonight seeking approval. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the Lucci subdivision and require a baker and Route 9. There's a subdivision. Site plan review.
Motion, please.
I'll move, you second. Gail seconds. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Alright. I hope you're all set, Dan. Thank you very much. Enjoy the rest of the evening. Looks busy, so I'm glad I'm the first one. Okay, so it's 7:05, and we need to order, open up the public hearing. And the first public hearing that we're gonna be hearing is for Stewart's subdivision, which is actually a merger of three additional parcels to the additional, the original or the main Stewart's parcel on the corner of Dix or Saratoga Road into Main Street. I'm gonna read into the minutes, the legal notice that was published on 4/26/2017. Legal notice, public hearing, subdivision minor, Village of Southlands Falls. Please take notice that the village planning board of the Village of Southlands Falls will hold a public hearing on the application for approval of a subdivision minor. The subdivision involves the alteration of lot lines by merging four village tax map parcels into one. The pre-existing lot tax map parcel 37.62-1-39 of commercial use will be merged with tax parcels 37.62-1-7 and 37 dot 67-1-8, 37.62-1-9. The action is classified as a Type 2 action pursuant to the State Environmental foul review act 617.5. It's a Type 2 action C., which is the mapping of ownership patterns. The hearing and review is in accordance with Village Law of the State of New York, paragraph 7-728 in Village Code Chapter 153-3. The address of the pre-existing lot involved with the subdivision minor is 3 Saratoga Avenue, Village of Southlands Falls, Saratoga County, New York. The hearing will be held on Wednesday, the 10th day of May 2017, at 7:05 PM at Southlands Falls Village Hall, 46 Saratoga Avenue, Southlands Falls, New York. At that time, all interested parties will be given an opportunity to be heard by order of the planning board. The name of clerk treasurer, David Linehan, here. That was published on April 26th. So I opened up that, this public hearing. Are there any comments from the public? Mr.?
I have one observation about the exit from the site.
Yeah, tonight's hearing is primarily for the merger of these parcels, but go ahead, you can.
Yeah, I know that. That's the only thing I am concerned with.
Okay. So you're just concerned with the exit onto Route 9? I'll let you know that I think it's being worked on, right? The county, and are you aware of the county and the?
We have not had any comments back yet from the county. We are dealing with DOT for highway work permit, which we expect comments back this week, so.
And I think the county is working with DOT for signage, if I'm not mistaken, so. So we'll be hearing more on that. Bridget?
Somebody mentioned to me that they had a concern about the tanks. I mean, this'll be what our fourth.
I think all the tanks are.
It's over Aquifer in the village.
The tanks that are in the ground today will stay in the ground.
Are you gonna add, was it Three Islands?
It'll be Three Islands that'll be under the new canopy, yes.
Well, they're fairly recent, right?
The tanks, the tanks. I think the tanks are maybe '09. They were installed, replaced at that time. They're double wall fiberglass tanks, the pretty much latest tanks you could have. Pretty much what we will do, there is a concrete pad over those existing tanks, that will come off, we'll do new piping to the new canopy, then a new concrete pad will go on. But the tanks themselves will not be touched.
They're not adding more tanks.
Not adding more tanks, no. There's two tanks in the ground now, I believe, is it 12,000 and 6,000?
So when they put those tanks in there originally, were they always expecting to expand Stewart's?
No.
Or they just?
We were looking, to be honest, and we were before the board, we were looking to put an addition on the existing shop. And that's where the thought of, you know, purchasing property and rebuilding came about.
So they're gonna be back? They, we reviewed a preliminary plan, which you see here, Mr. Givens, is, this is the second time we've seen it, but they will be back again to do stormwater management, I think is one of the issues.
Those plans, those plans and the report are finished, they'll get submitted tomorrow.
And Reed?
Could you explain how the tractor-trailer will come onto the property to deliver gas and how it'll exit?
Our proposal is for the tractor-trailer to come down Main Street, come south on Main Street, take a right into the, you know, proposed parcel.
So where will the tractor-trailer enter Main Street?
It'll come south on Route 9.
Yes, but that's, but if it's making a right, okay, right, right turn. So how will it exit?
It'll exit out to propose north, right out only on the Saratoga Avenue, heading north.
Will it have enough swing?
Yes.
It's gonna come in on the first exit?
It's gonna come south on Main Street, come in here, park here.
It's making a left on the, from Main Street, or left right on the, from 9?
Right 9.
It's gonna come south.
On Main Street?
On Main Street.
Oh, so it's coming from the north?
It's coming from the north, going south.
So it's not gonna be coming, you won't be coming north into that building, into the property? You're always gonna be coming south onto the property?
That's what we're proposing, yes. Coming south on the Main Street, taking a right.
Was that a recommendation?
Parking here, and then coming north on Saratoga.
That's what they're doing.
I believe that is what they're doing.
And I think that's what we're hoping, that most of the clientele, most of the customers will be doing too, is, you know, coming in from that Main Street exit.
If you're coming south on Route 9, that will be the only way in.
It's gonna be the only way in.
Right. You brought it up, I wanna continue. Coming out of Stewart's on the Saratoga Avenue is not coming out onto a northbound lane. It can't.
Right, but we've.
It's impossible. It comes out into a east.
North or south?
South on Main.
Straight or?
No, no.
Fifth, if you call it Fifth Street, straight, right?
Look at, you go out and look at the roads.
Yeah, I know.
In the road, there's a loop. In the road that says you've gotta turn on the bias.
That's right.
On the East Street, on the Fifth Street East.
And then you can.
You can't go north without violating the law.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Yeah, 'cause it's two lanes.
Yes.
And there's two lanes. Well, the center lane is a northbound lane.
Right.
You can't get into the center lane without crossing the other lane, and you're not gonna get into that lane when they're backed up to Marion Avenue.
Well, we've already, we've already.
So they're gonna, they're gonna come out into that Fifth Street lane and squeeze into the north.
Oh, I got you. That which is illegal. And I've seen cars do it, because there's a light, the light, the arrow indicates the Fifth Street. The other line, the green light, just indicates going up north.
That arrow up, that sign up on that light is a negligent move by the state. That's, that's, right lane has an arrow that goes straight. If you go straight, you're gonna run into that pole. There's another arrow that goes this way that indicates you can go around the loop to go south on Main, or.
That's right.
The east. But there is nothing in that lane that indicates you can go north. If you go from that lane to north, you've gotta violate the law. In the road, there's a narrow like this, and a narrow like this.
In the road, right.
There's no straight lane out of that lane.
By the way, you'd have to agree that this plan is better than what exists now, and what was approved for the.
This whole thing came about because of the state.
Improvement.
No, they, they reorganized that whole system when they did Saratoga Avenue and Main Street. They put that center lane that was never there. Their grandfather's right now on what they've got. The configuration of the traffic at this time, because of the state move to put that center lane in, dumps their traffic into an illegal lane.
So I think they're, the only way you can do it is very carefully.
No, there isn't any way to do it carefully. If you do it, you're gonna do it wrong.
Because of the solid lane, because of the solid lane you're saying, suggesting?
They're talking about moving the exit lane farther south on Saratoga Avenue, but they can't go far enough to avoid the backup of the center lane.
You're suggesting that the state would have to re-mark that line to a dotted line?
They gotta do away with the center lane. There's no way to get them out of there legally.
To do it legally.
So when you do it, you're gonna do it illegally.
But you're saying it would be illegal for them to stay in that lane and go north?
Absolutely.
That's, that wouldn't be, I can't say that won't happen, because I'm sure it will.
It happens every day.
People take a left out of the site now, and they should not do that. But the goal is to come out of this site and get in the correct lane to head north.
You can't do it.
I'm sure you can at times.
Oh, yeah. They stop the traffic here and let the center lane open.
You can't, you can't go, as you suggest, you know, go down Fifth Street and then take a left onto Hudson Avenue, and watch the light, the safety of the lights, which is, you know, a lot of times, people within the village do that.
Well, sure, you can do it that way, but.
Well, I understand what you're saying, so.
I can't understand why the people in the village can't understand what's going on there. They're seeing it every day. I come, I'll bet you that I've come out of Fifth Street a dozen times and almost got nailed because the state won't put up a no true traffic sign on red, on the southbound side of Main Street. If they put a, if they put a no, a no turn on red, they put up a narrow, a green arrow, but they don't put up a no turn on red.
Where's this now, on Main?
When you come out of Fifth Street, say, Hallel Mary, that somebody's not running at a stop sign, going south.
Okay.
They run the red light, and they almost nailed the car coming out of.
Yes.
I had a truck, I'll bet you was going 30 miles an hour, he blew the red light, and almost nailed me.
Go because of the red.
When I got to that side.
Because you're coming out of Fifth Street onto Route 9, right?
I'm coming out of Fifth Street and going down 9.
Going down 9, so the car coming from the south, heading north.
Cars coming from the north on the inside lane.
Oh, on the inside lane.
Right by Pepper.
Oh, yeah, alright.
And they blow the light, and they almost get the car coming out of, and we've had a lot of, a number of them there. They had the car coming out of Fifth Street.
I always thought it was actually the other, the other side where they were, when you got the arrow and you're heading, you're very right, the side right by the Pepper Mill, they kinda like shoot through that. You got a green light, then you got an arrow, but when the light's green for Fifth Street, everybody goes, we're supposed to all stop, because now you got a solid red light on that right-hand side, speaking of.
Coming south.
Coming from the south for the, yeah, heading, heading south, right.
But people.
That's a dangerous intersection.
But people, like he's suggesting, people stop and then make the right-hand turn.
No, I'm saying they stop, period, and let the people come out of Fifth Street.
Yeah, I know.
And they don't stop.
But they don't stop because they think it's a right-hand turn.
But they got a red light. There's another arrow.
You'll think, you know, going back to this whole.
What this is gonna do is contribute to the problem on that intersection.
Okay, Reed?
I was wondering.
Go ahead, Bill.
They, this, this, these arguments have been argued between, between the village and DOT ever since they did the project. In all their wisdom, they won't admit that they screwed up. And it's called a safety improvement, and it's never, you know, that's, isn't that?
Reed?
They only have somebody from the DOT here when they have something like this coming along.
We, we go through the county, and the county helps us out, you know, with the DOT comments, but we don't get very far. In fact, when they, when they came up with these safety improvements, they never came before the planning board, they never solicited our.
They don't ask anybody.
Reed?
I was wondering if they could restrict the deliveries to, you know, you know, nighttime, you know, between like 10:00, 10:00 PM and 6 o'clock in the morning, when the traffic flow is a lot lower, and less chance. I mean, if you do it at 2:00 in the afternoon or 8:00 in the morning, there's where you have, when you go off peak, have them deliver off-peak traffic hours, might make it easier.
I think they do that, they do that now, and.
I don't know if they do or not. I mean, I'm usually not here during, that's, you know.
I can look into the delivery hours.
That could help.
A lot of it is based though on, you know.
We didn't have coffee, we don't have to wait till 8.
Sure, but you're also.
There's a large demand for gas, we're not gonna sit empty.
Sure.
Wait till 2:00 in the morning.
Sure, but then again, you can plan the figure that you know that, but based on, you know your usage.
And, yes. Typical usage, it's when all of a sudden the 6 o'clock news says it's gonna get two feet of snow tomorrow. We run out of gas, because everybody goes and fills up every tank they have with gas. It's situations like that, that there are odd times, we will probably deliver on odd times. But setting a delivery schedule typically is not a difficult thing for us to do.
So I'm gonna include your comments, and we'll forward those down to the county. The county's working with the DOT like we do regularly, and, but tonight I wanna focus on this merger, and so if there's no other comments, we're gonna have another site plan review. Reed?
Are you gonna discuss curb cuts with the new properties? Now they got houses that are gonna disappear, what kind of curb cuts are you gonna have?
Well, you can take a look at the plans. That was one question I had. There's some trees that are on there, and I think maybe the trees are gonna come out. Can you, can you go over that?
We actually don't show any of the existing trees. This plan does show where the existing homes do sit, and the existing Stewart's sits. We'd be, you know, constructing the new Stewart's directly behind the old Stewart's.
I think the sidewalks are pretty, pretty much disrepair, so you're probably looking at doing this.
Sidewalks, you know, curb cuts, you know, we'll redo all the curbing along, you know, Saratoga Avenue and Main Street to bring them up to match the curbing that exists, the height and type of curbing that exists today. Again, sidewalks, any, you know, stubout sidewalks that go to the existing homes obviously be removed. If it ends up being in the area that's proposed to be grass, obviously it'd be grass or landscaped in certain ways.
Okay, so is there any comments on this merger of the parcels itself? I think we've, we've gone over the number of required parkings, and that was, that's one of the reasons for us to review mergers, so that the applicants that are expanding and doing new construction do follow the codes, so that they don't, they don't not comply with the, with the zoning requirements. So I think area-wise, they have enough. What we will be looking at is how they're gonna be handling stormwater, so we'll be looking at that the next time they come before us. So if there's no other comments concerning the merger, I'm gonna close the public hearing. If there are no other comments.
The houses.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to grant for tax maps. My friends over there, very smart, like I don't.
Yeah, close the public hearing and seconded by Kim Wilson. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Another 100%.
Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And so I think, I think we're gonna, we're gonna go with the checklist right now. I think we can, we can move forward on the merger. We, this is a, was a Type 2 action, because it's just merging property lines, tax map parcels. We're actually just changing the lot lines. We do have a subdivision review checklist, so the, I'm gonna move that, moves that the action to review a subdivision minor, alteration of lot lines, merging of pre-existing lots to make a single lot, area performing in the District C of Commercial District for Stewart's Shop Corp. be classified as a Type 2 action. We did that last week, so we scheduled the public hearing. We did the public hearing, so we moved to close the public hearing, so I'd like to, I'll, I'll move to approve the final map of the survey and plat. It's been described, we received descriptions. I checked with Joe tonight, and all the, all the taxes have been paid on all the, all the lots.
So is the assessment gonna go up for Stewart's?
Pardon?
To compensate for the tax loss? The assessment on the new Stewart's, is that?
I'm not the assessor, but I'm.
You know, I just wondered if there's gonna be a balance in between the loss of revenue and the new Stewart's.
I would think that the sales tax revenue would probably go up a little bit, but, you know, it's.
It's probably not important right at the moment.
And I'm not the village, I'm not the village assessor or the town assessor, so that would be a good question for her as to, well, but I'm assuming that with the amount of gas that will be sold and the size of the Stewart's, it should be, it should be more than a wash.
Stewart's will bring that up when they, when they assess it.
So I'll entertain a motion to approve the final map and survey plat. Now, you're second?
Second.
Okay. Kim seconds. All those in favor to grant the approval of this subdivision tonight? Aye? Okay. Alright, thank you very much. You're all set then, right?
On the condition of, like what Mr. Fitzgerald said on the.
We're gonna, no, we're gonna do a site plan, but this is just, this is just the merging of the parcels.
I understand that. I mean, that's a lot of work right there, just thinking about what he said too, you know? That's a, that's a, that's a grandstand stuff there.
I'm sorry.
I think I already got approval.
You're dangerous. You're very dangerous.
I'll give you that.
I don't think you're. I'll see if I can glue it back together.
She hit you right in the head.
Okay.
Okay.
So that'll be coming up the next, next round, right?
Correct. Do you know, do you know when you'll be that, Marcus?
I believe it's the 14th of June. Is that the meeting, or is that the?
Planning board, 14th of June.
Yep. Yeah, I think that's when.
I think the agenda identifies it later. And the, the next deadline is May 22nd, you'll be able to get.
You'll have plans tomorrow. You'll have plans tomorrow.
That's not the sheet you published for us to go by. I have a sheet from you that says May 17th, and that the meeting's June 14th.
I got 24 here.
I got 21st.
Yeah, and that's what we talked about at the last zoning meeting. We figured, we were June 1st for the following, for the final zoning, and then back for planning on June 14th.
I got the wrong date, wrong date, Ben.
Yeah, I brought that sheet you published beginning of the year. That's what I've been using to go out.
And what was, and the date was 14?
Yep, and May 17th would be the cutoff.
Alright, so my agenda is incorrect. I had, I have June 21st, which is actually June 14th. May 22nd is the deadline for the.
May 17th.
Was that what I screwed up? May 17th is the deadline for the filing.
You'll have it tomorrow.
I guess I gotta send out the agenda.
Yeah, sure.
For you to, for you to check. My two dates are on, on the last page, the last review planning board agenda items and the announcement. I've got June 21st listed, it's actually June 14th, and the deadline for submittal for next month is May 17th. See that?
Yeah.
I messed up. Not the first time. Okay, so the second hearing. I messed up. Not the first time. Okay, um, so the second, uh, hearing we're having tonight, the legal notice, a public hearing for, um, O'Reilly Auto Parts Store, Village of Southlands Falls. Please take notice at the Village Planning Board. The Village of Southlands Falls will hold a public hearing on the application for a proposed site plan at Village Tech Map Parcel Number fifty, uh, fifty dot twenty-one dot dash one dash two. The site plan involves a proposed construction of a ten thousand six hundred twenty-five square foot structure for O'Reilly Auto Parts Store. The plan proposes a common egress of the New York State Route Nine with a contiguous parcel of land to its north. The address of the proposed construction is one ten Saratoga Road, Southlands Falls, Saratoga County, New York. The hearing and the review is in accordance with the Village Code Chapter one nineteen dash six D, which concludes a special report on the traffic impact safety concerns and the Village Law seven dash seven two five A Site Plan Review. Public hearing and the decisions on, on site plans. The report and site plan will be available for public review at the Southlands Falls Village Hall. The hearing will be held on Wednesday, the tenth day of May two thousand seventeen at seven oh five PM at the Southlands Falls Village Hall, forty-six Saratoga Avenue, Southlands Falls, New York. At that time, all interested parties will be given an opportunity to be heard by order of the Village Planning Board and the Avoc clerk, David Lindham, Chairman. This was published on April twenty-sixth, uh, twenty seventeen. So, um, we're here tonight to, uh, hear about the traffic, uh, study and report, and any updates that you have on the site plan, but primarily this was, uh, this meeting, this public hearing was called for, uh, to discuss traffic concerns, uh, in that area.
Good evening. My name is Rob Osterholt with Bowler Engineering and what I, what I'll do, um, if it means with the board's approval, is I'll kinda run through the project a little bit, seeing as it's a public hearing and, um, people may not have heard about the project. So, uh, the project site is located at the intersection of Route Nine and Beach Road, uh, the northwest corner of the intersection, uh, where there's an existing wood barn that sits on the site, uh, back here. There's currently access out to Route Nine, um, over here at the front of the site. Uh, there's another access point on the adjoining property up here across from Baker Ave. And there's access close to the intersection down here on Beach Road. So we're, uh, here tonight representing O'Reilly Auto Parts with their application for a new, uh, building at the site. Looking to come in with a retail use, uh, for an auto parts facility here. O'Reilly Auto Parts, uh, has been around since the late fifties, uh, homegrown, if you will. They, um, uh, have grown over the years, uh, from their start in Missouri to over forty-eight hundred stores today, um, across the country. Um, so they're a very, um, you know, prominent success story in the auto parts industry. And, uh, they're happy to come into New York State. They have no other locations in New York State right now. Uh, they're expanding into New York State and, uh, this is, um, probably gonna be one of the first, if not the first location for them, uh, in New York State with a new ground up store here. So we're, we're anxious to, to get them in the ground here and get them started, uh, take advantage of the construction season. But, uh, I'll walk you through the, the proposed project here. Uh, what we're proposing to do is demolish the existing barn that's on the site, close the existing curb cut out here, uh, along Route Nine, close the existing curb cut over here on Beach Road, and then construct new access points further away from the intersection here on Beach Road. The access out onto Route Nine, Saratoga Ave will be opposite Baker Ave. This access is on the adjoining property. O'Reilly's is working through an easement, um, for shared access and utilities on this adjoining parcel. Both driveways would be full access. Uh, as you come into the site, uh, we've got parking spread throughout the, um, front and side of the site here. Uh, what you see in these different colors, the gray is the asphalt pavement. This lighter, uh, tan color is concrete pavement, uh, so all the parking lawn in front of the building will be concrete. And then the darker tan here is the actual building. Over here, this lighter, uh, concrete pad area is the trash enclosure. We have landscaping, uh, around that to help screen it. You can see the landscaping that we have proposed throughout the site as well. Um, we have stormwater management areas, um, off to the north and west of the building. All of the setback requirements for the project meet Village Code. Green space, front yard setbacks, rear yard setbacks and the like. Parking is compliant with Village Code. And, um, with that, um, the chairman mentioned traffic. Uh, we did a limited traffic assessment up front for the project, uh, to identify the amount of trips that would be generated by the project. The Village, uh, hired a traffic consultant to review that information and provide feedback on it. Uh, we've gotten some feedback from them recently. They're looking for more in-depth evaluation of traffic. So we, or have been coordinating on that and we are going to be, uh, doing some further traffic investigation and reporting for the project. Uh, that work is, um, gonna be happening over the next few weeks and we'll have, uh, an additional report to submit to the board as that, uh, is completed. With that, we anticipate that the traffic consultant the Village hired will review that and, you know, weigh in with their feedback as well.
So that, that should be ready for the next, next meeting?
Yes.
Um, what, what percentage, um, we do, we did, uh, get Peter Face comments. Eight different questions that he asked. What percentage of the ten thousand six hundred twenty-five square feet is for stock area? You can maybe go over the fact that this building was enlarged, uh, recently.
Yep, that's a good point. So when we did our traffic study initially, this building was proposed at eighty-eight hundred square feet. After, uh, we had been before the board on a couple of occasions, O'Reilly had a change in their program where they wanted to increase the size of the building from eighty-eight hundred square feet to ten thousand six hundred and change. With that change though, the retail area on the building did not change. So the retail area was held the same. That's roughly fifty-eight feet by fifty-seven feet. Um, so this area right here is the retail portion of the building. The balance of it, this portion here is all back of house storage for parts. So even though the building square footage was increased, the retail floor area did not increase as a, as a result of that change. So we don't anticipate that there's gonna be much, you know, additional traffic because we're not adding, you know, larger retail floor area.
In fact, your traffic consultant suggested that there would maybe be less because, um, there was more storage, so there'd be less amounts of traffic, truck traffic coming in.
That's right. That's exactly right. So, um, so there was a follow-up traffic, um, assessment letter that was, um, provided to, you know, identify that the increase had been in the storage space, not in the retail floor area that would drive additional customers. However, the, the traffic consultant for the Village reviewed that and is asking us for some additional information and that's what we're gonna be working on. Um, you know, other than that, um.
So what, what percentage, uh, is stock area total on the?
It's probably close to two-thirds of the, of the floor area.
Okay. Okay. Does the public have any other questions regarding traffic?
I'm not getting a question. I got some statements. As far as that building goes, I'd say get that built because we need the sales tax. But the traffic is another entirely different story. I'd say go ahead and build that tomorrow. When we come to traffic, this traffic design study on page four and five. Where it says Gansburg Road, New York State Route Thirty-two. And you know, listing on those things on, on that area, it says the posted speed limit is thirty miles per hour. And this is New York State DOT data indicates an eighty-five percental speed of fifty-three point five miles per hour in both directions. Now, over here it says, on thirty-two, there's a posted speed. Well, I did a little traffic study in my, my own today. Coming north on the Gansburg Road, starting at, well, by the way, there's an indication here that, the studying indicates that New York State DOT wants to do a, a little traffic county. I find the direct opposite. At Myron Road on thirty-two, coming north, just a little bit north, there's a speed limit sign, forty-five miles per hour. One tenth of a mile farther north, there is a speed limit sign, forty-five miles per hour. Six, five tenths of a mile farther, you come to William Street. At William Street, there's a Village sign. Telling the people they're coming into the Village. There is no speed limit sign. One block farther up, there's no sign. Two blocks farther up, there's no sign. Three and a half blocks up, you come to the intersection of thirty-two and nine. And on Saratoga Avenue, there's a thirty mile sign. Now you ride over on the Route Nine and down by the, uh, veterinary clinic, just a little bit north, is a speed limit sign, forty-five miles per hour. One half a mile further up north, you come to William Street. At William Street, there's a Village sign indicating you're coming into Southlands Falls. Twenty feet behind that sign, there's a forty mile speed limit. Two blocks from that, there's another sign, forty miles. Two blocks from that, you're at the intersection and a thirty mile sign. Now, if they were, if they were serious, they wouldn't be telling somebody from ten block two coming up Gansburg Road, you can go forty-five miles an hour and urge them a little further on to go forty-five because they're coming into a Village. And there's nothing to indicate to check. If a car comes up the Gansburg Road and they're going forty-five miles an hour and a hit could somebody come around a Henry's or Charles Street, who's to blame? The guy going forty-five?
No, and I, and at the last meeting, we did discuss.
As far as that plan goes, when they get all through with the speed limit, it'll be down. So they'll make that better.
That's good. And, and the planning board did bring that same issue up, you know, is there an opportunity to have, um, the state reduce the speed limit in this area?
I got a bunch of pictures for you. Every one of those sites.
Okay, we'll put that in the record. Thank you very much.
That also has been officially requested of the DOT, make that thirty, let us put thirty mile an hour zones from, from the Y to both of the extremities of the Village. I mean, they don't wanna listen, they don't wanna listen to it.
One of the sad things about this is in the Village Code, both sections of those roads, from the intersection of nine and thirty-two to William Street on thirty-two and William Street on nine, the Village Code says that's forty miles. You got a lot of mistakes here that need correcting.
Reed?
Could you, could you explain the tractor trailer traffic getting into, going and entering?
Yep.
And how it's gonna?
So tractor trailer traffic, um, we've got the two access points, so tractor trailers can make their deliveries to the site. Uh, what we anticipate is that tractor trailers would turn in, um, here, circulate through the site, come back in, or what they call the dealer door is back here in this corner of the building. Uh, so deliveries could be made to that, uh, location of the building. And then trucks would exit out onto Beach Road and come out and head north or south from there.
Is there enough, enough arc, enough for that, for a fifty-five foot trailer?
Yeah, so we provided a truck turning, um, template on the plan. That's something that we just met with staff about. Um, and the, uh, Village's consultant engineer to talk through that. That was a question that they had. We need to provide some additional information to, to show that that works. So, yep, and we'll be doing that.
Is there a turn lane on Route Nine for that entrance?
There is.
For tractor trailers? Okay.
Yep, there's a two-way center turn lane here.
All the way up though by, by Baker where you'd be turning in?
Yes, ma'am. Yep.
It starts on where William Street, that's what part of the, the, the upgrade of the road was, because of, the whole thing was because of rear end accidents was the major reason of the.
I, I, I was aware, Monday I was heading south on Route Nine. It was, uh, I don't know, nine thirty or so in the morning and, uh, there was a tractor trailer that was, uh, coming into Best TV. And there was a tractor trailer heading south. This tractor trailer was heading north and did all of his movements. I stopped and the tractor, everybody was very courteous and the guy did an excellent job, you know, backing up. It didn't, it didn't take that long, but.
So he backed into Best?
Best TV.
Isn't that illegal? From Route Nine?
I don't know.
I think it's illegal to back in off of a, you have to go in by.
How else are you gonna, Reed, how else are you gonna? How else are you gonna?
It's not illegal to back into the.
Dollar General takes, that's a truck.
I don't think it's illegal to back in and back out onto the street though.
I don't think it's legal to back. They don't want back. They want, that's the whole point. They want traffic to go in a continuous flow. Backing into is, is, I know.
I can tell you we won't be backing tractor trailers out onto Route Nine or, or in over a nine years.
But I'm just suggesting that the parcel next door, that's what, that's what happened and, uh.
Well, that's what grandfather, probably grandfather did.
And, and I've seen, you know, other courteous measures, which is pretty remarkable. Like, you know, you got the forty miles an hour and you got the thirty mile an hour speed limit, but you got, you know, five extra miles, you know, in the Village with this wide extra center lane. Everybody feels it's a, you know, the northway. And, uh, but I've seen some, you know, uh, people trying to cross Route Nine and people actually stop and when, when people are trying to cross, even without, uh, being in the, uh.
My friend's kid got hit on a bike going to school today, so.
Hit him?
Going to the middle school, so it's not.
On Route Nine?
No, Main.
On Main Street? Yeah, Main Street.
He lives on Wilson. Sorry, I just thought of that.
Well, Main Street's, uh, it's gotten pretty heavy too. Um, are there any other questions, uh, concerning traffic or the site plan? Um, and again, Gary, Gary, you're here. I'll close the, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. If there are no other comments.
I just have one more question.
Yep.
So when the tractor trailers are coming out onto Beach Road, they'll be making the right on Route Nine?
Uh, depends on where they're going. They may be going to another store to the north. They may be heading south.
And there's enough room for him to make that right?
Yeah.
Without going into the other side of traffic?
So, um, if they were turning, we, we haven't run truck turning templates, um, for that movement, for coming out southbound here. Um, we've run through, you know, getting into the site and getting out of the site on Beach Road. We haven't looked at this, you know, intersection per se, but I can tell you that, you know, the DPW facility is right here. You've got large DPW trucks coming in and out of there with trailers on the back of them and they make it work. So I suspect it's gonna work for us as well.
But you're fifty-five feet, trailer plus a cab. I doubt there are fifty-five feet trailers going into the.
No, I, I agree. They're probably not fifty-five foot trailers, but they are larger cabs pulling those trailers too, so, yeah.
Could you, uh, I, I, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not familiar with that, but on the, on the, the road opposite the, uh, Beach Road, can you, can you go through there and then take a left onto Gansburg? Is that, is that two-way right there?
Yes.
Coming across. Yeah, but a truck wouldn't be able to do.
No, but he could go south and do a loop.
Oh, yeah, he could go down thirty-two.
There's a safety light and then juice, and then.
Yep.
Make, and then make the other. Bad turn. Illegal, or not illegal, but a very difficult turn on feeder dam, uh, right? That's a, cause it's not a right, it's not a perfectly right angle intersection there by Cool Beans. Yeah, it's kinda, that'd be a, that's a, it's a difficult movement. Are there any other questions on the? Are there any other questions on the, on the site plan? While Gary's there, Gary, are we in pretty good shape with the stormwater?
We met Tuesday, went over the plans. We've given them comments, oh, I don't know, three weeks ago or so. And we met Tuesday and went over those comments and there were some additional ones that needed to be addressed. There were some things in the stormwater. I haven't been 100% through the sweep, although I've been through probably half of it. I think it looks reasonable. I don't think there's going to be any issue with it that is in a property minor. And we just got a copy of the... Did we get revised plans back tonight, Rob, or no?
No, the plans that, those were the ones we parked for the markup shift.
So we're awaiting revised plans to address the comments that we had.
But those revised plans that we had, we wouldn't hold up on?
No.
They're acceptable, we're just...
The only thing we're waiting on right now is the final traffic.
Yes, sir. In the county referral.
County referral.
And Rob, we received from you an email today with, Dave, did you get a copy of all that?
Email we got today from Rob? Yes, I did. Yeah, I did. Yeah, I sent an email to Rob today asking him to do the summary of the, the part one of the mapper, the DEC Environmental Quality Review Act short form, the mapper summary. And he sent that for me and I'll forward that to everybody. The next meeting, then at the next meeting, we'll take care of the environmental review, seeing that we're waiting on the thing. I just had some, Joe, maybe you can answer these questions. Number two and number four, they want O'Reilly's to, the consultant, to do forecasts of a likely development scenario for the Baker lands to the north of O'Reilly's. Number four, which is similar, the combined trip generation from the auto parts store and a comparable trip generator on the parcel to the north. These parcels have been vacant since 1993. It was like, it's like 24 years that this, this plan has been vacant. What kind of, what are we, what, what kind of uses do you think is going to happen on that vacant parcel? I mean, we could be looking at a drone airport, local drone airport or an international drone airport for, in 24 years.
Anything that would fit on 1.48s.
What, what?
Yeah.
Well, it could be, it could be an office building where the trip generation isn't, you know, isn't as much as a retail, right?
Typically, you take the worst...
Case scenario.
Case scenario and say that's what we're going to have to plan for. And the, and the purpose is, what he's looking for is, is that entranceway across from Baker adequate for something, because we're locking it in, that's all there's going to be.
Yeah, right, and I totally agree with it. I mean, that was the intent when we subdivided that parcel, is that we were going to have a common cross easements that were going to be allowed. So, I mean, it's in keeping with the plan and the DOT put it in the right place. You know, I mean, when they did the improvements, that curb, or curb cut was maintained, right?
No.
There's not a curb cut there?
There's two curb cuts.
There is an existing curb cut here. I think when the improvements were done, this curb cut may have been improved with a new...
With a new sidewalk and, right?
Sidewalk and everything.
So I mean, so everything's according to plan. I just, I'm concerned that, I don't know, we, nobody knows what's going to go there and it's, it could be 24, another 24 years before that site ever is developed, so...
When you do a traffic study, what happens is you're looking into the future to see what the traffic can be. And the only thing you have to use is what the zoning is today and then what's the worst case could go in there as the zoning being today, what it is today. So that's typical on all traffic.
Our zoning is 1960 vintage, 1960, 65 vintage, and we're, we're looking at traffic that's 19,000 car trips in a year.
Yeah, that's, yeah, roughly in the ballpark.
In the middle of the town. I mean, you know, I, hopefully in 24 years, maybe we're entertaining a larger mass transit.
Might have flying cars there.
Yeah.
I can remember when that was Baker Brothers Garage.
Yeah.
And they were running the sidewalk.
Yeah.
And as far as traffic goes...
I just, I just wondered...
Before they put the northway in, in the summertime, they used to have car covers, guys sitting there with a cover, towing cars, coming up West Street Hill on the 4th of July, and cars would be backed up to Saratoga Avenue.
Forever, all the way through Lake George. Yeah, that was, that was a show back then, before the northway. All right, I think we cut.
I have one thing to note about that, future development here. So the traffic consultant is asking us to make some projections for that, for planning purposes, but we take exception to that because we don't control that property. We have no rights to that property. And we don't feel it's fair for us to have to include that in our assessment of traffic because this is what we're proposing. If somebody comes onto this adjoining property to propose another project, they are going to have to come in front of the board, just like we are, and they're going to have to do their traffic assessment to figure out what their impacts are. So we're kind of, we've gone back and forth with the traffic consultant, talked through that, and we're going to work through it as we do this traffic report and respond. But I just, I bring it up because, you know, I think from a seeker perspective, we need to take into account that the only application that this board is reviewing is what is, you know, shown here. So to include impacts from something else that may or may not happen in the future is kind of putting us at a disadvantage. So, you know, I just bring that up to kind of give you a heads up as we move forward.
Can you summarize the review of, right there on your map, you have the signals that have been approved. I guess that was part of the safety, right, where the Saratoga, S in the Saratoga, the traffic light, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
The safety light.
Yep.
And I think the consultant said that some of these improvements had been made in the safety.
So 2014 DOT, you know, did some work along the corridor.
What would the, what would the traffic have to be to warrant a red light at, and I would suspect that that's the traffic light that would be used?
To warrant a signal where, here or here or anywhere?
I'm assuming that that, that's the light that they were going, that they would use.
Yeah, wherever it would be. There are signal warrants that would have to be met. New York State DOT has signal warrants, there are seven of them, I believe. And you have to go through those to figure out whether or not a signal would be warranted. It's based on, you know, everything from traffic counts to pedestrian activity to, you know, accidents and the like, so...
Now, the traffic consultant that the village and the town shared back in 2002, that was a study was prepared for the Adirondack-Lunsfeld Transportation Council, suggested that it would be a pedestrian activated light, I think, back at, at the Beach Road, the intersection there.
Yep.
Is that, am I correct on that, Bill? Do you remember that?
No, I don't. I think that's true.
Yeah, the 2002 study did have some alternatives and recommendations for future improvements. So when DOT came through and made the improvements along this corridor, you know, they did the crosswalks here and things like that, but my guess is that they didn't go to the extreme of putting in, you know, pedestrian signals or a traffic signal because it wasn't warranted. I'm sure they evaluated that.
I guess my question is, what, what would the number be to warrant a traffic light at the Baker and the Route 9 intersection across from your Egress, actually, yeah?
Yeah.
What would the numbers have to be?
They'd have to be pretty large to warrant a signal there. You know, if you think about it, there's no warrant for a signal at this intersection today.
It'd have to be like a Walmart kind of thing, a Walmart.
Maybe not that big, but it would have to be very large, much larger than anything you're going to see on our one and a half acre site and the adjoining, you know, little over an acre and a quarter site.
The, down at the corner of Feeder Dam and William Street and Route 9, they have the pedestrian right-of-way buttons on all those. And I think there'd be less people crossing down there than there is anyplace up here. I mean, they've got to go in four, four different ways, but, you know, you look there, very seldom do you see anybody who wants to walk across there. And I almost clipped one today because they, they, as I turned out of Feeder Dam Road to come this way, somebody was walking from out of Carriage Traders towards Cool Beans. I mean, 15 feet away is the crosswalk.
Yeah.
He's, he's in the, in between and he almost got clipped.
Crisscross, back and forth all the time.
Yeah, that's a really bad sister.
But it's a good crosswalk in the...
People aren't using it.
No.
Okay.
That's the speech, improvement.
Are there any other questions from the, we didn't close the public hearing.
We did, but I'd say we didn't.
Did we close the public hearing? Do you want to move? Dale moves to close the public hearing. Okay, the public hearing closed at 8 o'clock exactly. I don't have any other questions, but I slipped some other ones into Gary, so I guess we're all set there and we will expect to see you back next month then.
So June 14th?
We said 14th.
June 14th. And the deadline for submission is...
The 17th.
The 22nd? May 17th?
17th.
May 17th.
That'll be your final plan, right?
Yes. Yep, that would be, like Joe said...
Or 17th.
17th.
17th of the submission, yes. Yes, like Joe said, you know, we've received some additional comments from the review that Joe and Gary did. We'll be addressing those comments with the next submission of plans and we'll be getting the traffic study into the board as well from next week.
Okay.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for your time this evening and look forward to being back in June.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Thank you. Okay, last on our agenda is Ethan.
So they send us our final plan, it comes to us, right?
Pardon?
The final plan on 7/8 and something you got?
Hopefully, yeah, it will be closed next month.
I mean, tomorrow, O'Reilly's stores are going to give you the final approval.
Yeah, by the 17th and I'll hand all that over to you. Okay?
Sure, sure.
You're messing up trustee J. Ress' calendar.
No, we got good information on it.
All right, Ethan, help us out, tell us what we got to do. I think the first thing maybe we can do for you is to declare ourselves classified as action, as an unlisted action. It hasn't been before the zoning board of appeals to get a new use bearing.
Use change back from, it was, it was, the previous owners have gotten it changed from apartment use to condominium use. We got to change back to apartment use. So we did that at the, Joe, remind me what meeting we were at. It was the last time we were here with the zoning board meetings, one or two years ago. We got that taken care of. In the meantime, the owners of SRSTT have, have started the demolition of the, of the four mini-story units. They've got everybody cleared out of them and they've started to do the demolition work down there. So the first drawing that we've got up here is the existing site plan that shows three existing apartment buildings and four mini-story buildings. The next drawing that's in your pack, it shows the proposal for the two apartment buildings that were proposed. This is very similar to the original proposal that Tom Hutchins had done back when they were looking at doing the condominiums. It's just that we've tipped them so that they run in line with the, with the property line. It allowed us to get a little bit better parking, a little bit better access, as we discussed before. We've refined these layouts a little bit more since you've seen them the last time. We've added new landscaping in. We've met with Gary and gone over the stormwater management, Gary and Joe, gone over the stormwater management, how that's going to happen. It's actually a net decrease in hard surface to the area, so the actual runoff is less than what's there now and we're doing, we're taking measures to control it and taking measures to update it. So I know Gary's had a chance to look through it. They haven't gotten any comments back, so I'm assuming they're perfect. The, the next drawing is the, the layout drawing and erosion and sediment control. It's a relatively flat site, but we have provided erosion and sediment control around the sides here. We've also provided some stuff up along the backside. If there's anything that's coming back down onto the site and want to control that and take care of before it gets onto the site. Showing our construction entry, which is coming in off in the paved area now. We'll pull that up so that we've got the area to get the wheel runoff done before it gets back out onto the roadway out there. All of our plans have shown the connection on all of them.